John, you're muted.
My wife would love to have that all the time. With that, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved?
Trustee Sandell, second.
Second.
Trustee here. Discussion. This is Coder. We'll call, please.
Trustee Figel.
Aye.
Trustee here.
Aye.
Trustee Kershaw.
Aye. Here.
Pratt. There he goes. Trustee Sandell.
Aye.
Trustee Tobin.
Aye.
Vice President Young.
Aye.
And President Linderman.
Aye. We are out of executive session. And again, with that, I would like to welcome the public back to the Lockport Board of Education's regular meeting and Board of Camisters meeting for Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Vice President Young.
No problem.
Mrs. Coder, we'll call.
Trustee Figel.
Here.
Trustee here.
Here.
Trustee Kershaw.
Here.
Trustee Pratt.
Here.
Here, thank you. Okay. Trustee Sandell.
Here.
Trustee Tobin.
Here.
Vice President Young.
Here.
President Linderman.
Here. And with that, we will move on to the next item, our mission statement. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Schrader.
Actually, I think Mrs. Bradley is going to start and...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, President Linderman and Mrs. Schrader. I did want to say a few words before I turned it over to Mrs. Schrader, who has something special planned for tonight. It's my pleasure to present to the Board of Education and the community, the Lockport City School District retirees for the 2019-2020 school year. They are a distinguished group of individuals who have put their hearts into their work over many years of service. While most of the retirees ended their careers in an unexpected way, we want to give them a moment tonight in the spotlight to recognize and thank them for their dedication and commitment to students, colleagues, and the district. The retirees are, from the Lockport Administrators and Supervisors Association, Gary Wilson, Principal of George Sutherland Elementary School, 31 years in the district. From the Lockport Education Association, Nancy Buffon, math teacher, Lockport High School, 35 years. Christopher Bush, social studies, Lockport High School West at Charlotte Cross, 25 years. Kevin Clark, science teacher, Lockport High School, 39 years of service. Diane DeYoung, art teacher, Lockport High School, 31 years of service. Loretta DiCarlo, special education teacher at Emmett Belknap Intermediate School, 23 and a half years of service. Deborah Lorenzi, special education teacher, Emmett Belknap Intermediate School, 32 years of service. Diane Lowry, elementary teacher, George Sutherland Elementary School, 24 years of service. Susan Finney, teaching assistant, George Sutherland Elementary School, 27 years. Jan Metz, school nurse, Desales, 26 years of service. Deborah Moser, teaching assistant, George Sutherland Elementary School, 25 years. Wendy Pecarrero, special education teacher, Lockport High School, 31 years of service. Daniel P. Tuck, mathematics teacher, Lockport High School, 20 years of service. Timothy Toley, grade six, Emmett Belknap Intermediate School, 21 years. Christopher Tucker, English teacher, Lockport High School, 23 and a half years of service. Jaclyn Welch, teaching assistant, Emmett Belknap Intermediate School, 23 years. Deborah Jaeger, music teacher, George Sutherland Elementary School, 32 years of service. And William Yarns, science teacher, North Park Junior High School, 20 years of service. Members from the Lockport School Employees Association include Wanda Alfonso, teacher aide, Lockport High School West at Charlotte Cross, 24 years. Deborah Jarca, school secretary two, North Park Junior High School, 13 years of service in the district. Eugene Lewis, head custodian, Lockport High School West at Charlotte Cross, 45 years of service in the district. Carmy Morris, assistant custodian, George Sutherland Elementary School, 11 years. Maureen Perrone, account clerk at the Board of Education Building, 17 years. Leslie Riddle, school secretary, North Park Junior High School, 23 years of service. Adrian Sutton, teacher aide, Emmett Belknap Intermediate School, 19 and a half years of service. Kathleen Yakos, teacher aide, Roy B. Kelly Elementary School, 25.5 years of service in the Lockport City School District. Each retiree will be presented with a certificate of appreciation and a yard sign, because that's the thing nowadays, since we can't be together. So they've been informed that they can come to the board office to pick up their certificate. I present it to the retirees on behalf of the Board of Education. I apologize that we aren't able to have a reception for them and acknowledge their years of service in person, but they understand and they're appreciative. And just want to wish, again, on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations and best wishes to all of the retirees during your retirement years. And now, I'll turn it over to Lisa, because we'll hear some of the retirees on what their future plans are. Lisa?
Thank you. I know you might be surprised, but I learned while working with the retirees over the past few weeks that quite a few of them are actually very camera shy. So I'm going to play a video that we've put together, but you will notice, a combination of videos that they did record themselves. There are also some just typed messages from the retirees, and we printed them exactly as they typed them. So some of them are a little bit lengthy, but great stories to tell. And then lastly, there are just some simple recognitions, so that we made sure that we included everyone. So I hope you enjoy the parting thoughts. I do want to give a special credit to Heather Bickra, who really was instrumental in putting this video together. And then the second video is them, nine of them, presenting the mission statement. So I need to go on mute, and I will share my screen and show the first...
There's no audio.
Still no audio. I want to hear her.
Lisa, what if you unmute your screen?
We can hear it now. Can you max screen it, too?
Hi, I'm Nancy Buffon. I'm a mathematics teacher at Lockport High School. I've been with the district for 35 years. My best memories, I think, are homecoming games, where you can see past and present students, all the musicals that were always so enjoyable, especially the very first musical production of Grease, where I did a cameo, and the standing ovation started when Charlie Begley and I came to make our curtain call. In retirement, I hope to be traveling to Las Vegas in September to see a former retired teacher, Joanne Straight, and I have a trip to Washington, D.C. in October. But I'm just looking forward to relaxing. I will try to stop in to see a few Lockport athletic events, especially tennis. And I just want to thank you. I've really enjoyed my time in Lockport. Good luck to all of you next year when you go back.
Hi, I'm Susan Finney. I'm a teaching assistant at George Sutherland Elementary School. I've worked for Lockport City School District for 27 years. I have so many memories, it's hard to pick just one. I'm going to cherish all of the smiles, the hugs, the high five, and the laughter the students have given me over the years. I have loved working in the Learning Center and teaching children how to read. When a child realizes I can do it, it's such a rewarding feeling. Also, my GS family, past and present, who I have learned so much from over the years. In my retirement, I plan on enjoying my family, watching my grandson Lincoln, spending some time at our cottage on Lake Ontario, and doing some traveling with my husband.
Hi, I'm Debbie Jarca. I'm in North Park Clerical Two for the past 13 years. What I've liked most about my position is the kind and wonderful people I've worked with, who I now consider lifelong friends. After retiring, I'd like to travel, once it's safe to do so. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Lowry, and I have taught for 23 years in the Lockport City School District. I started as a reading specialist at Roy B. Kelly Elementary School, and then taught second grade there. I moved over to George Sutherland and continued to teach second grade, and then switched to kindergarten in the last four years of my career. I loved every minute of teaching. The joy of watching young, inquisitive children learn and grow has been a gift that I will cherish for so many happy memories. I thank you for the opportunity. And now it's time for me to go and nurture my own inquisitive mind through travel.
Hi, Wendy Pecarrero. I am retiring after 32 years teaching in the Lockport City School District. Most of those years have been at Lockport High School, where I was also a student for four years. My favorite memories, graduation, watching all the students as they go up on stage to receive their diplomas. I also live in the community, and I love running into students and talking to them and seeing what they're doing and what they've done post-graduation. After retirement, I will be golfing. I also just purchased an RV, so my husband and I will be traveling, and we will also be enjoying our three grandkids and hopefully more to come. I've enjoyed every moment of teaching, and I will miss everyone.
Hi, my name is Leslie Riddle, and I've been a secretary with North Park Junior High for 22 years. My favorite memory is the bond that I've always had with my North Park family. They've hit my back, and they know I've always hit theirs. I love them dearly, and I'm going to miss them. My retirement plans consist of spending more time with my family, traveling, especially the beach, and finishing and starting a lot of my art pieces. I am so ready and excited for this part of my life.
Hello, I'm Gary Wilson, Principal of George Sutherland Elementary School for the past two years, Principal at Emmett Belknap Intermediate Middle School for 17 years prior, Assistant Principal of Emmett Belknap Middle School for four years before that, after starting my career teaching fifth grade at Charlotte Cross Elementary for eight years. I did math right, that's 31 years, as an educator in Lockport City School District. Don't really have a single favorite memory, but I do have countless fond, funny, fabulous memories that take turns at the top of my favorites list. I have no grand plans for retirement, but I do have a lengthy want-to-do list. I hope to remain productive. I look forward to having a shorter got-to-do list. Thank you to all the faculty, staff, administrator, trustees, parents, students, community members of the Lockport City School District who have made my career so fulfilling.
Hi, this is Bill Yarns. I'm a science teacher at North Park Junior High for 20 years. My favorite memory of North Park, I'm not one to seek the spotlight, and so the joke was, I must be in a witness protection program, because I kept a little low-hollering. I enjoyed serving the Lockport community. I loved with my students. Every day was a new experience that I looked forward to. In retirement, I claim a level sum, and spend a lot of time with my newly-born grandpa. So thank you for the great 20 years I've lasted.
Very good.
That was outstanding. They did a great job. And again, thanks, thank you to Heather. So next, I have a very brief presentation of the mission statement. We were able to corral nine of them into agreeing to do this. It was a little bit of a challenge. We needed a couple of takes, but I think it turned out pretty well. So I will share that now.
We believe all people can learn.
School creates conditions for success.
Academically, socially, emotionally.
Physically and aesthetically.
Teaching and learning are
the shared responsibilities of home, school, and the community.
Our mission is to ensure comprehensive learning for all.
So that each person will be a lifelong learner.
That is cute. That is cute as the kids, Lisa, but great job putting it together.
Yeah, they did an amazing job. It was neat to spend some time with them. I'm very glad that we put that together, and I will send that off to them, so they'll have those memories forever in those two videos.
Cool.
Thank you for that time.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. And with that, we will move on to our next item. We have a presentation, Mrs. Bradley, the district-wide safety plan.
Yes, thank you, President Linderman. As many of you know, if not all of you, school districts in New York State are required to annually review, adopt, and then implement a safety plan district-wide. And then, of course, each building develops a safety plan for each school in the district. So this evening, Deborah Coder, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services, and Kevin Gay, our district safety officer, are here to present some of the revisions to this year's district-wide safety plan. There will be a comment period for 30 days, and then it is required that school districts adopt their annual safety plan by September 1st, and we'll have to submit that also to the State Education Department. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Deborah Coder and Kevin Gay. Thank you both for being here this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Bradley. District Safety Officer Gay, are you online?
I am. I am.
I'll just do a brief intro for, Kevin has worked meticulously with, actually, Lisa Schrader and Leon Sivansky from our Orleans Narco Bosse's specialist, and a wonderful challenge was making sure there was some overview guidelines for a pandemic slash epidemic. So Kevin, I'll turn it over to you for the highlights.
All right. A sec here. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Tonight, we're going to go through the revisions that the district-wide safety team came up with for this year's annual review. Again, I'm Kevin Gay, the district safety officer of the school district. The overview, quick, each school district must adopt a comprehensive district-wide safety plan by September, September 1st each year. We are online and on track for this right now. As superintendent stated, after tonight, the 30-day review, public review period will, will begin. Here is the cover page for, with the proposed revision date change of June 2020. The table of contents, all the changes are in red or the additions. You should have that in your, in your packet. We have the addition of parent, parents' guardians on the notification plan for page 22. Identification of school teams on page two. We updated the Director of Technology's job title to include data security and communication. Risk reduction intervention on page four, the first paragraph, the word comply was changed to complying. The next bullet, we added the term under training, pandemic preparedness training, suicide prevention training, and restorative practices. And I have a note here in blue that currently, the pandemic and epidemic policies and procedures are being reviewed by Orleans Narco Bosse's Safety Risk Department, and will be added in this plan as a functional annex. We've left room in the plan for that, but not until everything is approved by the New York State Education Department, the Governor's Office, and this Board of Education. The next bullet, restorative practices, was added. Programming initiatives, crisis management, page five, resolving issues, was added. The next bullet, engaging in discussions and maintenance of, were also added in that paragraph. Drills and exercises, page six. The opening sentence, we added the word include. The next, the last three bullets were added in. For the required drills must be through the use of fire escapes on buildings where fire escapes are provided through the use of identified secondary means of egress, conducting drills at different times of the school day, and pupils shall be instructed to proceed to the follow, to be followed in the event of a fire occurs during a lunch period or assembly. That's something we're going to be working on with the buildings a little bit more moving forward, as well as the building level safety teams. Implementation of school security, page seven. The first paragraph, we added in the word cafeterias. That was not in before. Security personnel, on page eight, we added the term pre-K to 12. It used to say just K to 12. And then, under the response to acts, page 15, we've updated the terms securing, notifying, determining, contacting, and monitoring. District support for buildings, page 17. Again, these words were added, disseminate, facilitate, facilitate, provide. And then, on step seven, should be composed of staff, students, and parents. Page 18, step eight, the addition of may include altering, providing, referring, and arranging. Building principals, we just heard that George Sutherland's principal, Mr. Gary Wilson, is retiring. Once the new principal is identified, their name will be added into the plan. And the John Pound Early Childhood Program has a new director of Mrs. Sylvia Baptiste. And then, under parent guardian notifications, the terms parents and guardians were added in two different areas. And copies will be made available on the district, or you can view it on the district website, or copies will be made available. You contact the business office at 130 Beatty Avenue. Any questions?
No, but if you want to, you want to serve on the policy committee anytime, you're welcome, Kevin.
Okay. Okay. I think just one of the big things that I know is, is right on the forefront of everybody's thoughts is the pandemic and epidemic. And it's hard to put anything together until we get a little bit more guidance from the state, federal government. So, so we're kind of hanging, hanging tight on that. We don't want to add anything in that, you know, that we're going to have to change or be appropriate. So that's kind of why we haven't done anything with that just yet. So, but Orleans Bosse's is on it, and they're keeping an eye on it, and so are we. Any other questions?
We've got a question. Trustee Young?
More of just a comment question. This is the, where we put this on the website, and then the people can go in... More of just a comment question. This is the where we put this on the website, and then the people can go in, and it's like almost like a box that they select in and they, you know, can put their input like more, it's a it's almost like a form that they fill out on the website to to put their input in, correct? As usual, as it's always been in the past, right?
Yes, that is correct. And then the technology office, when the 30 days is up, they, if there's comments, they'll make sure we get them. If there's not any comments, they'll make sure it shows there were no comments.
So everybody should go to the website and put their input in, and this is your time to put your input in.
Thank you, Trustee Young. Trustee Feigl.
As Chairman of the Facilities Committee, and being on the Facilities Committee as long as I have, I've had to deal with Kevin and Timmy Parker on numerous occasions. And they're kind of the forgotten people over there on the annex. But whatever's needed from their group of people, you just call them, and they get right back to you. They get the job done. If you need an explanation, you get it. This safety plan is tough. It's it's has to be adjusted almost monthly with situations that arise. And the effort and time that the people who are responsible for this should get the kudos for doing a job well done. If you haven't read the plan, do yourself a favor and read it. It might seem boring, but it's very informative. It's how this district will function if the need arises. Thank you, Kevin, for your effort.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, Trustee Feigl.
For the question? Kevin?
Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to echo, thank you to Kevin Gay, Tim Parker, and Leon. They have a great working relationship. This is a, it's a very involved plan. There were a lot of changes this year, language, updates, changes like that, this year more than I think most that I that I can remember. But as we move forward with this and we pass this and it goes on, realize that it's never really a it's not like they take a year off. They're already planning for pandemic epidemic language to be inserted, and it's a lot of work. It's very involved, and I appreciate all the hard work that Kevin puts into this along with Timmy and Leon. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep. Anything else?
I just want to also thank Kevin Gay, and of course, Tim Parker and Leon Srbansky too. But especially Kevin for your oversight and coordination of the plan in the committee. And remind everybody of the timeline. So tonight is the presentation of the plan. There's a 30-day public comment period through July 17, 2020. The Board of Education is expected to adopt a plan in August, and then it will be posted on the website. And as I mentioned before, our building level plans will be reviewed and stay be aligned with the district-wide safety plan. It's a plan that we want to have to be the best ever, and it's a plan that we never want to use. So thank you, Kevin, for your leadership.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Gay, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Very, just a couple of special thank yous, Board of Education, Mrs. Bradley. Your leadership and guidance and your dedication to the health and wellness and safety of the students in the district is is just awesome. Thank you. To the district safety team, they're strong, we're focused, and keep up the good work. Orleans Nagrebosis Safety Risk Department, they're invaluable. Their phone call away 24/7. There's always somebody answering the phone. And a super special thank you to Leon. Leon is the rock. He keeps us all in line. He keeps us all going. And he really has a handle on what's going on, not only in Lockport District, but, you know, throughout the Orleans Nagrebosis districts. So thank you again for everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gay. Appreciate it. No further questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move on to our next item. Mr. Gay, you're free to leave the meeting, or you can stay.
There we go.
He's trying to leave.
Trying to get out. There we go. There we go. All right.
Thank you.
You all have a good evening. Thank you.
You too. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. We have the agenda and minutes approval. And I need a motion for the approval of the revised and proposed agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Trustee stand down. I need a second.
Second.
Trustee Feigl, discussion.
President Linderman, I'd like to have business action item A1 removed from this evening's agenda. There will be a special meeting tomorrow to approve the annual, to accept the annual school election and budget vote. So if you could remove A, B, A1 under business items.
We will remove A1. Thank you, Mrs. Coder.
Has there been some notification out to the public or about the meeting?
Yes, agenda for the special meeting and the continuation of this meeting for a special meeting tomorrow has been posted. And the notice has been also posted along with the agenda. The notice has also been posted on the website, correct, Dr. Lapuma? Yes.
Thank you.
And provided to the local media.
Yes, yes. We send it to all the local media. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? With that, Mrs. Coder will call, please.
Trustee Feigl.
Hi.
Trustee Hare.
Hi.
Trustee Kershaw.
Hi.
Trustee Pratt.
Hi.
Trustee Sandell.
Hi.
Trustee Tobin.
Hi.
Trust, yeah, Vice President Young.
Hi.
And President Linderman.
Hi. Motion's carried. And with that, now we need a motion for the approval of the proposed minutes for work session meeting of May 6, 2020, the regular meeting of May 13, 2020, and the budget hearing meeting of May 27, 2020.
So moved. So moved.
Trustee. Second, trustee stand down. Discussion. Mrs. Coder, roll call.
Trustee Feigl.
Hi.
Trustee Hare.
Hi.
Trustee Kershaw.
Hi.
Trustee Pratt.
Hi.
Trustee Sandell.
Hi.
Trustee Tobin.
Hi.
Vice President Young.
Hi.
And President Linderman.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion is carried. Number five, under action items, we have A, business matters. We are approving two through eight. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
So moved.
Trustee Kershaw, second trustee Feigl.
Yep.
Discussion. Mrs. Coder, roll call, please.
Trustee Feigl.
Hi.
Trustee Hare.
Hi, sorry.
Kershaw.
Hi.
Pratt.
Hi.
Trustee Sandell.
Hi.
Trustee Tobin.
Hi.
Vice President Young.
Hi.
President Linderman.
Hi. Motion is carried. B, personnel matters, we have number one, appointments, resignations, and other. We have one through 22 dated June 11, 2020.
President Linderman, there's a 23.
23. Did I miss 23? I'm sorry, 23. Yes, I did at the very bottom. Thank you, Mrs. Schrader. One through 23. Dated June 11, 2020. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Motion. Trustee Feigl, second trustee Pratt. Discussion. Mrs. Coder, roll call.
Trustee Feigl.
Hi.
Trustee Hare.
Hi.
Trustee Kershaw.
Hi.
Trustee Pratt.
Hi.
Trustee Sandell.
Hi.
Trustee Tobin.
Hi.
Vice President Young.
Hi.
President Linderman.
Hi. Carried. C, educational matters. We have one through four. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Trustee Sandell, I need a second. Trustee Tobin. Discussion.
I would just like to say, as much as I really enjoy the presentations of these plans, I'm kind of grateful tonight that we are not presenting all four of these plans tonight with the safety plan. I remember last year we did it all, and it was, they were long meetings, and so I appreciate that we are not doing that tonight. So thank you to everybody that planned that out.
Thank you, Vice President Young. We have a motion. We have a second further discussion. Mrs. Coder, roll call.
Trustee Feigl.
Hi.
Trustee Hare.
Hi.
Trustee Kershaw.
Hi.
Trustee Pratt.
Hi.
Trustee Sandell.
Hi.
Trustee Tobin.
Hi.
Vice President Young.
Hi.
President Linderman.
Hi. Motion is carried. D, special needs, we have one through two, Committee on Preschool, Special Education, and Committee on Special Education. I need a motion to approve. Trustee Pratt, second trustee here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Mrs. Coder, roll call.
Trustee Feigl.
Hi.
Trustee Hare.
Hi.
Trustee Kershaw.
Hi.
Trustee Pratt.
Hi.
Trustee Sandell.
Hi.
Trustee Tobin.
Hi.
Vice President Young.
Hi.
President Linderman.
Hi. Motion's carried. Next item on our agenda tonight, legislative update. Trustee Hare, you sent us some information. Do you have anything to add? You said it was kind of light at this time.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot going on at the state level, but the legislature is taking a backseat in terms of the work to the governor. Everything's coming through executive orders. So the only thing that came through was looking at the 180-day requirement, making sure that we're not penalized financially for not being able to bring our students into schools for 180 days. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Hare. Next item on the agenda, board president's comments. I just have a couple. Earlier, I say this meeting is probably the best meeting and the most enjoyable meeting of the year. All year, we do a lot of work and go through a lot of issues, and tonight, we always get to recognize our retirees. And the only disappointing thing is that they're not here in person to recognize them. It's always great to see some faces maybe that you haven't seen and to hear their plans for retirement. And I wish all our retirees the best of luck, and we will be missed. We lose so much experience every year. It's hard to replace, but I wish all our retirees the best of luck. I would also just like to acknowledge tomorrow night's special meeting, we will be approving the Board of Canvassers, the election for the budget, and trustees. And again, I just want to compliment and thank Mrs. Coder for all the tremendous work she has done through these times. This is all new. There's been a lot of changes, and we were given very short timeframe to do it. And Mrs. Coder, you've done just absolutely tremendous job. And I think you should be proud of yourself, and I know personally, I'm very proud of the way you've handled it. And we'll continue moving forward. So thank you. And lastly, trustee Feigl, this will be the third time I've said goodbye to you. You're like a bad penny. You keep coming back, but that's a good thing. The last couple of years, I've kind of said my piece regarding you. All the things you have done for this district through your years as chairman of our facilities committee, and I just can't speak highly enough of the work you've done and what you've been able to move forward, and our facilities are absolutely beautiful. Helping trans, sort out the transportation issues that we've had over the years. Your experience, your expertise as a traffic captain couldn't have been more valuable than it was at that time. And I think I could just go on and on. Talking about you, we've served many years together. You're not only a colleague on this board, but like a true friend. And I told you a couple of weeks ago when we talked that I will miss you, and I wish you the best of luck. You've, for the last two years, you've stepped up and served another year on this board when you could have said, no, thank you. But I know you love the district, and you're willing to take on that role, and I know I appreciate it. I think the board appreciates it, and the district is better for having you here. So thank you. And with that, I am going to move on to the committee of the hall, and I am going to start with trustee Pratt.
Well, short and sweet, I want to thank, caught me by surprise, John. I want to thank our retirees for the years of dedication and service and congratulate them on their retirement. This is what we all work for, to get to this point in time of our lives and enjoy every moment of it. It's it's just a blessing, and I'm sure they'll take advantage of it. A special thank you to trustee Feigl. I've enjoyed serving on the board with you. I've enjoyed our working life together. I had years where I was able to watch you on the streets, watch you do your job. I admired you and your job as a police officer, and it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you on the school board. I appreciate your dedication and your service to our community, and I'll see you soon on the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pratt. Trustee Kershaw.
I think Kevin said all of that very well about the retirees and about Mr. Feigl as well. I also want to thank the community for coming out so strongly and voting in this election. I also want to thank the election workers who are diligently working to get the results for us, as well as the administration, especially Mrs. Coder, for her work on this unprecedented situation. There, again, as President Linderman said, there was very little guidance, and and I think that her work is exemplary. In addition to recognizing the retirees, I want to say a special word of appreciation to Jan Metz. She's a nurse who's retiring this year, and I could tell a really great story, but she is an amazing nurse who I was able to trust my very small, very sick child with regularly. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, trustee Kershaw. Vice President Young.
I too want to thank everybody working on the election and the, the election and the budget vote. It's definitely been a huge undertaking, just all of it. Everything's changing all the time, and it's been truly remarkable to watch just everybody coming together, everybody doing what needs to be done and being professionally. And I did log in last night and, you know, watched a little bit of the live feed and, you know, and got to see Mrs. Coder running all around and your staff running all around and 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 all of those workers just sitting there just, you know, trying to do everything the best they can for for our community and for, you know, for this vote and and to make sure that everything is done the right way. And I appreciate the livestream. That was, you know, a nice thing that the district did so that everybody could tap into it. And so thank you for that. Congratulations to the retirees. I do miss them. I love hearing about what they're going to be doing. They always get, you know, light up when they talk about what they're going to be doing. And I guess finally, I want to say thank you to this And I guess finally, I want to say thank you to this board. This board as it is now is, this is our last meeting all together, the way we are now. And we'll see how it ends up and who's going to be leaving. We know for sure trustee Fiegel is leaving us, I think so. I think you're leaving, Tom. I mean, I've said this before, I think you're leaving. But you know, I think very highly of you and I have really enjoyed the time together. And like I said, this board works so well together and I really appreciate all of you. And especially during the last few months, we've all been seeing even more of each other virtually and had a lot, lot more meetings. And I just really appreciate everyone just coming together and working really hard for the district and for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Youngs. Trustee Sandell.
I got to say that this is, this is a very odd meeting for me. Being that there's this election going on and now we don't have the results and we'll have a special meeting to finalize that and accept the results. You know, in a way, I mean, this, this could be my last meeting for a while. If I don't get elected, and I think Heather and Martha are thinking the same thing here. If I don't get elected, you know, I certainly plan to come back at some point in time in the future and try to get elected again. So it's, I guess that says a lot that I enjoy working with all of you. The, the board members, you guys are phenomenal. Everybody's serious, everybody's dedicated, everybody contributes. We have people that speak up and speak their mind and, but yet respect everybody else's opinion. And, and I can't say enough about all of you. And that includes Michelle, Lisa and Debbie as well. We have a great team here that I hope, I hope, even if I'm not on the board the next year, that somehow you can continue to make that happen. Tom, good luck. We know, like you said, you're leaving. We all appreciate everything you've done. I did serve on the facilities committee for a couple of years and I know what a phenomenal job you do with that committee. I will, I hope I continue on and I will continue with the policy committee. But if I don't, it's been a pleasure meet, working with you guys. Again, serious, serious work. We have some fun, but we get a lot done. So I really appreciate all of it, so. Take care.
Thank you, trustee Sandell. Trustee Tobin.
I want to say thank you to everyone that took the time to send in their ballots. Fifty-three hundred ballots is a lot of ballots for our little, for our district comparatively. I hope that when things go back to normal, we can have a regular election, that that number just continues to get bigger because voting is so important on every level of government. So really appreciate everybody that took the time. And to all of the, the election officials that have come in over the last two days and will be back tomorrow to continue getting those counted and doing them correctly and making sure that there's not an error and we can seed our new trustees, we can find out about our budget. And best of luck to the candidates. Here we go another day. So, Tom, thank you so much. It's, this meeting was supposed to be my last one of the year and what a year it has been for my very first year here on the Board of Education. But I really appreciate having Tom only a couple of seats away. And he's been a wonderful servant to Lockport for many, many years. And I wish you the best of luck. And every year when we recognize the retirees, I am astounded at the numbers of years people have worked in this district, which just goes to show that it's a really great place to be. They wouldn't stay 30 years if it wasn't. So I really appreciate you all. We're going to miss you, but I hope the next chapter in your lives is just as wonderful as the last 30 years of them. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Tobin. Trustee Hare.
Tom, thank you for all of your service on the school board. I don't know if I've said this in the last two goodbyes, but one of the reasons that my family decided to move back to Lockport was going to see Phantom of the Opera in the auditorium after the new facility opened. And I know you were a huge part of, of that improvement to our district. And it really inspired me to think, you know what? I could bring my kids back here and finish raising them here. So I appreciate your dedication, your thoughtfulness and, and everything that you have brought to our schools and especially with the facilities. So thank you. Thank you to the retirees. It's amazing how many years you've put in. I don't know what it says that both of my kids had teachers retire this year, but they both did. They're great kids. Maybe they had to leave on perfection, I don't know. But thank you so much for all of your years of service to our community and our kids. Thank you to everyone who's been working on the election and budget vote. I know it's been difficult and things have changed midstream and there's far more votes than we've ever dealt with it, certainly as absentee votes. And I appreciate the complexity of it. I, I really appreciate it. And as Ed said, this could be my last committee of the hall. We won't know until tomorrow. It's a fitting end, I suppose, to a very odd year. What else could we expect in 2020? This is the year we're living in. I guess I just wanted to say that this job is really hard. I don't know if the community understands how many hours we put in. They see a couple of hours of us out in the public in these meetings, but there's a lot of stuff that, that we do in the background that, that you don't know about. And I would like to thank my fellow board members, Superintendent Bradley, Assistant Superintendents Coder and Schrader, and especially President Linderman for mentoring me. I know I ask a lot of questions, but I promise that even if it seems like I'm just asking questions all the time, I'm using my most important skill of listening more than I am asking questions because I know that that's one of the most important things we can do as board members is to listen and learn first. And I wish much luck to the next board. This has been a really incredible year and we're just beginning to realize the fallout from this pandemic, both with, I guess it's many things, health, with the education impacts. There's a lot of kids who haven't gotten the supports that they would normally get. That's something we're going to have to deal with in, in the next couple of years, as well as the fiscal fallout from this. So I wish much luck to the board, whether it's me or other people and all of our incredible district staff. So I guess with that, I will end, except to say, like Leslie, I hope that people continue voting. That's really, really what I want. I want, this is the most important election, these ones right on your local level. Your vote counts more than any other election that you will vote in. So I hope that continues. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hare. Trustee Fiegel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to all our retirees. Everybody's kind of touched on it. The years of service shows that this district has something to offer people to come in and be with us and be part of us and make that your career. You know, as you get older, you get to reflect on your life and, and things that you've done and what you wanted to accomplish or what you did accomplish. I had 35 years as a policeman dealing with people. I've spent 20 years with the board actually, or the district, five as a substitute teacher and 15 as a board member. And you really don't realize how lucky you are to be able to deal with the people that are out there that want to deal with other people and help. That's what this board's about. And I really hope that the three incumbents on this board get a chance to continue the work that they've started as board members. The three of them bring a lot to this board. They have knowledge, they have eagerness to be part of the district. They want to do what's best for the district. So hopefully, the three incumbents will retain their seats. I've been privileged for able, being able to pinch hit for two years, as it were. I go back to the board members having the trust in me to continue to do the job that you think I can do. I'll miss you all. Work hard and keep this district number one. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Trustee Fiegel. And with that, we will move on to superintendent's comments, Mrs. Bradley.
Thank you, President Linderman. I too want to express, express deep gratitude to trustee Thomas Fiegel for his 15 years of service on the Board of Education. He has served with, with passion. He served with great pride and his wisdom is second to none. So I will truly miss you, Tom. But I do have a certificate for you and a yard sign for you. So I'll be delivering that to your home within the next couple of days. So thank you for all that you've done. I also want to express congratulations to Deanna Schmidt on being named as the principal of George Sutherd Elementary School as a result of a vacancy created by the retirement of Gary Wilson. Mrs. Schmidt has been an assistant principal at Lockport High School for two years, following several years as a building level administrator in the Buffalo Public Schools. Mrs. Schmidt will begin to transition to the role of principal at George Sutherd effective July 1st. I also want to thank everyone for their incredible efforts in making major shifts in the operation of the Lockport City School District during the coronavirus pandemic. We take comfort in knowing that each day brings us closer to being together once again. The significant levels of kindness, creativity, inspiration, courage, collaboration, leadership, patience, dedication that have been displayed this season throughout our learning community is quite remarkable. Please join me in congratulating the class of 2020. These students deserve so much credit for handling the COVID-19 crisis with strength, unity and resilience. As we all know, they have been short-changed of so many memory-making moments and they have sacrificed heavily. But the alternate graduation event that is planned for this Saturday will be a time to celebrate their achievements in a way that is new and exciting. I hope that the summer months are safe and enjoyable for everyone. While there is no guidance available from the New York State Education Department or Governor Cuomo at this time for the reopening of school in the fall, a district organizational meeting was held on June 16th, 2020 to begin discussing scenarios for reopening, along with several areas to consider for the safe and effective reopening of schools. The New York State Education Department is conducting four regional task force meetings over the next several weeks to gather input from stakeholders across New York State. This will be used to provide guidance to school districts around mid-July, which in turn will be used by Lockport to develop a plan that will comply with directives from elected officials and federal, state and local health departments. You will be kept updated throughout the summer on the developments of a reopening plan for the 2020-2021 school year. Please continue to check our website and email accounts for updates and information. And that's all I have for tonight, President Linderman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradley. Before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I would just like to give a brief explanation of tomorrow's meeting. We will be adjourned tonight's meeting, but tomorrow will be a continuation of the Board of Canvassers meeting, which was part of tonight's meeting. The special meeting will be a continuation of the Board of Canvassers meeting and we will meet at 5 o'clock to approve those results. And with that, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Sorry. Sorry, sorry, that's my mistake. I withdraw that.
Trustee Sandell, it took me a while, I got yelled at a couple of times.
I know, I know.
Discussion.
Had a brain fart there.
Further discussion. Mrs. Coder, roll call.
Trustee Fiegel.
Hi.
Trustee Hare.
Hi.
Trustee Kershaw.
Hi.
Trustee Pratt. Thumbs up, there we go. Trustee Sandell.
Hi.
Trustee Tobin.
Hi.
Vice President Youngs.
Hi.
President Linderman.
Hi. And with that, we will adjourn and I'll see everyone tomorrow night.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.